Good afternoon, everybody. Welcome to the April 24th, 2025 Board of Commissioners meeting. We're having a number of technical difficulties, so we apologize for any delay and if there's any glitches going on, it's just because we're having technical difficulties today in the Board of Commissioners room. But with that, we'd ask that everybody rise and we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance. So in the Board of Commissioners room today, we, for attendance, Commissioner Godu and myself, Commissioner Foyle, Commissioner Tom Barello will be joining in remotely for a period of, oh, he's here, and he's on.
I'm here, but I'm not really there. I'm in Orlando and it's only 92, just to let you guys know.
He is in sunny Florida, and we are bringing us remotely. Also, in the room, we have Allison Kivakowski, Chantel Jaconan, Jude Gates, Chuck Nickerson, and Leila Matilla. In Zoom land, I can see Sheriff Maseas, Major Bashon, Aaron Polker, as well as Pat Conway, and it looks like Jason Henry is also via Zoom. So with that, we're gonna, we have a little bit of some, just because of Commissioner Tom Barello's scheduling, we're gonna actually do, got a little out of sequence, so we're gonna start with the financial report, finance report, the Harvey Construction warrant, and then we're gonna move into a brief non-public session and come back into public session, just so everybody has a heads up. With this, that, let's move on to reports, the Finance Office, Harvey Construction, Off-Cycle AP.
Make a motion to approve the April 24, 2025 Accounts Payable Warrant, P251172, payable to Harvey Construction Corporation in the amount of $2,258,451 and one penny, as recommended by the Senior Director of Facilities Planning and IT and the Senior Director of Finance.
Second.
Here, all I'll say is the building's looking great, everything's moving along so well, it's remarkable. Chuck, do you have anything else?
Well, Jude can speak to Tuku. We did do a tour after this past Tuesday's meeting, and they are making very good progress on things.
That's great.
Obviously, you see even the waterline work to just kind of associate to the whole thing going on.
I ran into a former Rockyam County employee who was just blown away and said how beautiful the building is, and so it's nice to be out in the community and people really respond to the beauty of the building. And credit to, I know that Commissioner Godu is probably on the practice, is going to not vote against the warrant, however, he does get some credit because he did want to make sure that Commissioner Tom Barello was here so that we could approve the warrant tonight, so. You're not stopping the wheels of progress, even though you were.
But that's right, I'm not stopping the wheels of progress. The construction is going fantastically well. I'm very happy with it. I'm only unhappy with some receipts that are missing, and I don't need to go into it again.
Thank you. All right, on the motion, Commissioner Tom Barello.
Yes.
Commissioner Godu.
No.
And I vote yes.
Thank you.
Okay, and at this point, I'm sorry, just as again, we're, we're sort of switched around due to Commissioner Tom Barello's schedule and his being available on vacation, but I'll entertain a motion to enter into non-public session. Personnel matters, 91A, three seconds.
Second.
Second.
On the motion, Commissioner Godu.
Yes.
Commissioner Tom Barello.
Yeah.
Yes.
Oh, yes. Thank you, everybody. We're moving into non-public now. Hello, everyone. Thank you so much for your patience and understanding while we went into non-public session. We are back in public session and we're back to our regularly scheduled programming, which means we're moving on to the RFP openings and awards, and for everyone just knowledge, Commissioner Tom Barello has left the meeting. Here we go. Go ahead.
All right, so I make a motion to authorize the Senior Director of Long-Term Care Services to review, evaluate proposals, and return with a recommendation.
Second, that's with respect.
It, you know, it doesn't say dental services.
It says it on the opening. I should have read that. I, anyway, this is with respect to the dental services and it's the opening for that.
Agreed.
Any discussion?
No.
Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Next, we're moving on to the consent agenda.
Make a motion to approve the March 20, 2025 Public and Non-Public Minutes and the April 3, 2025 Public Minutes.
Second.
They look good to me.
Thank you, as always, Leila. On the motion, Commissioner Godu.
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay, next we have the HR bi-weekly recruitment report. Allison, anything you want to share with respect to the report?
No, we're doing good. We have a hire, we have an LNA, we have an LPN, so it's looking good. We're still moving along with those hires.
It looks like we have three new hires slated for the end of April into early May, so I mean, three full-time LNA's, a weekender LPN, and a housekeeper. I, life is looking, I mean, that's really great news. And when we started, actually, Chantel, when you came on board, where our goal was 17, and we have crushed that. So we, it was so dire a year ago at this time, and I just thank you to everyone because we can really see the ship starting to be righted, and that has a lot of impact both for quality of care for residents as well as the financial impacts. And it's nice having employees. Really, it's like, it's nice to see the same faces just for, for everybody. It's like you form relationships and it's a good thing. Okay, HR Nursing Recruitment Report, it was kind of part and parcel of the same, so do you have anything else, Commissioner Godu?
No, we're definitely trending in the right direction. We've saved about, it looks like we're going to save a little bit more than a million dollars on the, on the salary line this year, when by the time we're concluded, I'm still hoping for 2 million, but we're in that direction. I can't twinkle my nose and all of a sudden get everybody employed, but it would definitely go in the right direction on purpose.
Yeah, that would put us, I mean, in process, we're up to 21 off of the 77.
Right, yeah, that's fantastic.
Next, we have the payroll for April 25, 2025.
I make a motion to approve the payroll expense in the amount of $1,505,46 for the period ending April 19, 2025.
Second, discussion?
No discussion. It's all right in.
Right in line. Okay, on the motion, Commissioner Godu.
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay, now we have Commissioners' updates. Do you have anything, Commissioners?
Nothing particular.
Okay, then we'll move straight into the exception requests, 7-4 Human Resources and Facilities Operation.
Make a motion to approve an exception request to payroll personnel policy 7-4 of a human resources employee, AKA a facilities employee. JG.
Second, discussion?
We've reviewed this and we agree to the additional raise, and to be perfectly clear, these raises are a 5% bump, and it is appropriate so that they're in line with other departments and what they're, to be sure that the department heads are
Where they need to be.
Where they should be. So we had some full discussion on it, and I think we're all comfortable with that.
Great. On the.
Including Commissioner Tom Barello is comfortable with it.
Commissioner Godu on the motion.
Yes.
And I vote yes. Next, we have bid waiver requests for the Department of Corrections as well as Long-Term Care Services, and this is because it's a, there, there's some sort of shared with respect to the chaplain.
Okay, so these two motions should go together?
Yes, I, my suggestion is that you read both, each motion, and then we'll, I'll call the phone on each.
Okay, so motion number one, I move to approve the bid waiver request from the Department of Corrections and Long-Term Care Services for Angie Estvez Chaplin in the amount of $74,000. I also, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I didn't know if you wanted.
I also make a motion to approve the chaplain agreement extension slash amendment for the Department of Corrections in the amount of $37,000 to extend the term of the current current
Okay.
Contract with Angie Estvez Chaplin through June 30, 2026, and authorize the chair to sign all necessary documents as recommended by the superintendent.
And I vote, I make a second on each of those motions. He is a wonderful addition to our community, and we are thrilled to sign those contract extension amendments, and this bid waiver request makes perfect sense, though.
We've heard nothing but praise.
There's one issue before us, which is, we need, we need all three for a bid waiver, and Commissioner Tom Barello is not here. So I'm gonna see if we can get Commissioner, I'm gonna ask that this be tabled momentarily, so we can see if Commissioner Tom Barello can sign back in. Let me just see, hold on. See if we can, so I, I will move to table that motion for just a moment.
Second.
On the motion to table.
Yes.
And I'm, yes.
Thank you.
Hi, Commissioner Tom Barello, you're on speakerphone. We just had a bid waiver request for chaplain services, which requires, so the motion, I'll repeat, is to approve the bid waiver request from the Department of Corrections and Long-Term Care Services for Angie Estvez Chaplin in the amount of $74,000. The second, and so the second motion is to approve the chaplain agreement extension amendment for the Department of Corrections in the amount of $37,000 to extend the term of the current contract with Angie Estvez Chaplin through June 30, 2026, and authorize the chair to sign all necessary documents as recommended by the superintendent. Commissioner Godu made the motion, I seconded it, and do you have any, and we're now up to discussion. Do you have any discussion? Okay, on that motion, on those two motions, Commissioner Tom Barello.
100% yes.
Okay, on both motions, Commissioner Godu.
Yes.
And I vote yes. Thank you, Commissioner Tom Barello. I might be, I don't think we have any other bid waiver requests, but you know how to find you. Thanks, bye.
I guess you guys all, nobody was making any bad decisions or words while I was on the phone.
Okay.
Just hit it straight.
Back to the mic, bye. Okay, this is really like the special programming. I, I think everybody in Zoom land who watches this on YouTube later is like, what is?
What are those guys doing?
Re-ring service, okay. We will move on to Facilities Operations, and this is a request for real allocation of funds.
I move to authorize a reallocation of $14,000 from a remaining balance of $23,636.95 in the project line tub shower rooms to RC-RNC Plumbing Domestics, as recommended by the Senior Director of Facilities Planning and IT.
Second, discussion?
No.
This has to do with the backflow prevention devices, so we, we like it this way. On the motion, Commissioner Godu.
Yes.
And I vote yeah.
Thank you.
Next, we have health insurance premium write-off request for Human Resources.
I move that the Rockingham County approve a write-off for a former employee AJ Health Insurance premiums totaling $871.77 as recommended by the Senior Director of Human Resources and the Senior Director of Finance.
Second, discussion?
No.
Okay, on the motion, Commissioner Godu.
Yes.
And I vote yes. Now we have a position regrade for Facilities Operations.
I make a motion to approve a regrade of the Senior Director of Facilities Planning and IT position from a grade R24 to grade R25 with no change in evaluation date effective July 1, 2025, pending Executive Committee approval as recommended by the Senior Director of Human Resources.
Second, discussion?
No, all in line with what we're doing.
Really, and especially the, talk about scope creep in terms of scope of work, and we are so grateful, so.
Can we give you some more things to do, Jude?
I have a really big plate.
When do you, when do you sleep? That I want to know. You're right. Commissioner Godu.
Yes.
And I vote yes. So we have a number of motions going forward. I, it probably makes sense in with respect to these motions for, I guess we'll do one at a time, and for various departments. Motion.
So just handle them one at, one at a time?
Yes.
Okay, so I move to approve the wage adjustment option for JW and FCE as outlined in the memo from Human Resources dated April 21, 2025 in lieu of the annual increase percentage. This adjustment will be effective on each employee's annual evaluation date contingent upon the employee receiving a passing score on their annual evaluation with no reset of annual evaluation date. This recommendation is made by the Senior Director of Human Resources.
I've actually moved to table this motion right now because there are some other discussions, and there might be some things to discuss in non-public before we come out because it's with respect to Personnel Matters, and we haven't, so.
You want to table all of these?
I would like to table this, this.
The specific one.
No, C, because with respect to 1, 3, and 4, there's more discussion with respect to both Personnel Matters as well as rendering a proposed action ineffective as we choose which option to pursue there.
Okay. So.
In your motion, you didn't elect an option?
Oh, that's not, not one listed.
Right.
We have to discuss.
Okay, so I move to table C, 4C.
Okay, second.
On the motion to table, Commissioner Godu.
Yes.
And I vote. So let's move on to Long-Term Care Services. It's on page 3 with the Nurses' Salary Line Budget Review Information purposes.
Okay, that's for discussion, and I think I already mentioned that we were trending to save a million dollars on that line because of fires and getting rid of the agency personnel. Past that, that was what I kind of drew out of it, and it's good news.
Yeah, but, I mean, we're really doing a great job so far. It looks like we are, as I see it, about $600,000 under budget. So that's great trending. Do you have anything else to share, Chantel? Really great, and thank you for, I know, I don't know if it's Elaine, who, I think Elaine's the one keeping the spreadsheet, and she's so, it's like, what a valuable piece of data to have this, to really see what we're doing and how we're doing it, and it's very, it's great. Oh, I'm sorry, I said, yeah, it's amazing. We're under $1,066,000. Sorry, I missed, I was reading something else, the wrong line, so. It's great. Okay, next we have a grant application in the Sheriff's Department.
I move to authorize the Sheriff's Office to electronically apply for the New Hampshire Office of Highway Safety Traffic Enforcement Patrol's grant in the amount of $14,700 as recommended by the High Sheriff.
Second, discussion?
Always in favor of applying for grants.
Well, let's hope that grant funding is still there. With the state cuts, it's hard to predict what's still gonna be available, but it is a grant application that's applied for annually, and it reimburses both overtime costs and payroll expenses, which is nice, so it's like, there isn't any cost, and some of these grant app, grants do not include those, the rollups, so this does, so that's. On the motion, Commissioner Godu.
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay, we're gonna move right into Department Head Updates. I'm gonna start over in Zoom land because we're still having technical difficulties. And Attorney Conway, welcome. Good afternoon.
Hi, can you hear me?
We can.
Things are going well here. We're, we're busy as usual. I don't really have anything new to report other than that.
Thank you. Have a good afternoon.
Thanks, you too.
Chuck?
Nothing new to report. Have a good afternoon.
Thanks. We're gonna roll through quickly. Superintendent Henry?
1:37 inside, beyond that, same old, plugging along, that's all I got. Have a good afternoon.
I think everyone's beaten down by the budget and, okay, thank you. We're now back into, in the Commissioners' room, and Allison, too.
We're just starting to prep for annual enrollment moments, so there's a lot of activity going on that, and we're just summarizing the ending of the new negotiations, getting the CBA prep in that. Chuck and I are working for the tables and appendices and stuff like that, so that's great. Thank you.
And could you, for everybody listening later, tuning in later, can you remind everybody of when the open enrollment period is?
It is, sorry.
I believe it was May 19 to June.
9, I want to say, right?
Yeah.
Yes.
Look at me.
I'm looking free. So flyers will be going out, and the communication letters to all employees will be going out as well.
Would encourage everyone to, it's a big hassle to try to do, to try to ask for an exception for failure to apply during the open enrollment period, so please make your best efforts to get it done. If you have issues or you're, if any difficulty, get the link, we can get online. Go to the HR office there. They have a computer kiosk, which I have also utilized at times, and they're very helpful and very nice, so you know, before or after your, your shift or the end of the day, easy to go in and get it done.
Thank you.
Thanks. That was my public service announcement.
Thank you.
All right, Chantel.
Our, for our census, our nurse, the nursing home is at 136.
Ooh.
I know, so close.
So close.
And at the basis of living, we are at 48. I am happy to report, as of right now, we don't have any positive pieces, staff or residents any bucket, but I just kind of might put it out there, I get nervous. Just general things, not too much has changed. The one thing, or two things I did want to note, if you haven't already, the nursing home week is coming, and in this year's Tapestry of Life, if you walk through where the singer entrance, the hallway going for the atrium, Megan in our storage department did a beautiful display of residents' hands doing different kind of activities. It's up now, it's absolutely beautiful if you go that way and get to see it. Other than that, it has been working very closely with June and her team around our emergency preparedness manual and drills, and in the process of coordinating a tabletop that would include the Sheriff's Department as well as Department of Corrections, so it'll be a interesting experience because it's gonna help us develop a policy for something in our main building that is currently not in place. So looking forward to learning what they are going to help us do, so.
Thank you.
That is all I have.
Thank you. And that's great, like, you get everyone involved and a new policy.
Yeah, procedure. I hope to never use the procedure.
Well, yes.
But it's something that we, when we were talking, it's around if there was an estate type of situation, and we don't have anything here, and then also willing to come is Brentwood Chief or someone on his team, so we'll be able to kind of develop what that'll look like, which is just another layer. Again, hope to never utilize it.
Right.
But it'll be something that will be great to kind of proactively.
If you need it, you want to happen.
Yes, so I appreciate everyone's willingness, the conversations around coming to the table and helping us develop that and being part of the exercise.
Thank you. Chuck?
Obviously, primary focus on budgets. Cheryl Hurley did email out the subcommittee schedule, and it's also online. So if, if someone has not received that Word file, just let me know, and I can forward her email to you. Obviously, it's gonna be, we have meetings starting up on next Monday morning, and then the last one is Saturday, subcommittee for May 12. So lots of meetings within a two-week time period.
Yes.
Most of the meetings are Monday, Friday, but some are not, so please watch the dates on there.
Right.
Just reminded too that May 9, the Friday, second Friday in May, is the quarterly budget review for 33125. So that'll be the executive committee for the delegation. Also, the date for May 8 is the public hearing date at 5:00 PM in the Hilton for the Commissioners' proposed budgets. Also, I have a request that if you have not done so already for your department, can you please submit estimated numbers through the end of this current fiscal year? Because that gets included on the Commissioners' proposed budgets that go out, and I'd rather go with what a department might have than kind of look it over instead of just us doing our own estimates of your department's numbers. Just worry about the operating expenses, we'll take care of the payroll and wage and benefit related expenses, so. Grants, obviously, month following quarter end, still busy with grant filing. ARPA and some of the Sheriff's Office ones are due up next. We have the launching care grant application got submitted today for the musical instruments.
That's really cool.
Yes. Let's see, and for payroll filings, obviously, the normal payroll filings due month following quarter end, and also we took there the annual E4 census report that the feds acquired for BLS or the census. And let's see, I do just a little heads up for next week's agenda will be a good news transfer because we talked about the good news stuff on having our own nursing staff.
Yeah.
Well, the flip side to that is that for the, we're gonna need a transfer to go out from the staff line in part out to the employer FICA line and for retirement, but again, it's a good news transfer because it means we are attracting and retaining our own individuals in a total net sense for the nursing department that is savings.
Yeah, when we look at, at that million dollars, maybe it.
Yeah, it looks like, yeah, it looks like 70K will be needing to go out to the FICA and about 100 out to nurse.
Right, but we're still at 1.066, so it's still that, we're still a million and ahead, and it's like, it's kind of good that we give, we're giving, it gives our employees health insurance and retirement, and that's like, those are all good things, so.
Yes, and I'm sure we came to say, you know, if we have more of our own people than qualified care, you'd think it'd be even better to, whatever.
It's kind of neat to see sometimes you do things, and like, when we started down this road, there was some, not all of the Commissioners were in agreement in terms of moving forward in this direction, that it was like gonna be, whether it was gonna be problematic, and we were gonna be wasting taxpayer dollars, and here we are, sometimes.
Saving money.
No, it does, it's real money and like, real improvement.
Yeah, sometimes you have to invest to have savings along with them, so. And obviously utilizing some of our money is perfect to try to get to where, what was needed to attract and retain our own, so.
It's great.
And then, just like Allison mentioned, work on different CBA items far as, especially for me anyways, wage articles, appendices, and also contract cost items that will be needed too. And as usual, there's many things, lots of meetings with state centers about things at the state level. Met with two state centers yesterday, Pearl and Lane, and, and I'll say that Ray Bauer and Kathy Stacy and David Ross in Hillsborough were all part of the group that goes around Cape Oregon to talk to these state centers and make sure that what comes out in the Senate version of the budget is as most advantageous to counties as possible.
And that's, we are so grateful because, you know, we talked about the budget and the thing, the work that you're doing, you know, preempts like really difficult budgeting consequences, both on a revenue side and a cost item side, so you're heading it off at the pass in many instances by having these meetings, Chuck, so thank you so much.
Yeah, center grade is Monday morning, and then on May 7 is Center NSM, it'll be other meetings scheduled too.
The residents of Rockyam County should thank you personally for the reduction in their county tech, the portion. The residents of Rockham County should thank you personally for the reduction in their county tax, the portion of their, uh, property taxes.
Well, I'm just saying meeting right now with, with two state centers. So Kathy is at Concord right now is, uh, Senator Rose involved in Senator Waters.
Right.
So, but again, we, we know the negative impacts when we, as New Hampshire counties, sit back and let things happen.
Right.
Right. So.
It's important to, I know, address it prophylactically rather than immediately because immediately it just makes it financially disappointing.
Yeah, but I'm sorry, I know it's lost up, but thank you.
Thank you.
Stop there.
Right, Jude?
Good afternoon. I was rolling for somebody's operations. We are busy, just like everyone else. Um, just finished a counter top replacement. I can just go to kitchen that I understand came up beautifully. I'm gonna go up and have a look at it this afternoon. There's some nice grilled cabbages on staff.
So cool.
It is really cool.
Hard. It really is.
We're very excited to, um, order those back to the vendors. They're the two most important back blows on the complex.
Wow.
So I'm gonna go back and get them ordered straight away. Um, our, both of our plumbers will work on them together with the water and wastewater chiefs to make sure it's taken care of properly. So it's a big job. I'm looking forward to getting it done. They're important. Um, as far as the new building goes, as Chuck mentioned, things are moving along really amazingly. The, the flooring is in on the county attorney's floor. It looks really nice. Lights are going in. Um, there's, there is a lot of work happening all at once. It seems like it's getting busy all of a sudden outside, but I think it's just because the weather's broken. They're hoping to have the, I got an email just this afternoon from Revision. Almost everything has been done. Third-party testing will be coming up in next month. They're hoping to, to light it up.
Wow.
So, yeah, at one time they were talking about October, um, but I think they were anticipating what they're dealing with now, like with ever source. We're ready. And then they come and then there's like, you wait another while for them to be ready for the next step.
At the mercy of.
Exactly, but it's coming right along. So hopefully next month will be putting power on the grid. So it's really cool.
Wow, that's super.
I'm excited.
Next month.
Yeah.
Did you see that we got confirmation that yes, Revision has good reporting, valid support that they have met, um, or received a preventive wage.
Yeah.
Wages. So that's the other, that's two million, three million dollar credit. So.
Yeah.
That's a huge.
Yes.
They have certified payrolls for us.
Fantastic. Well, that credit is.
Yes, exactly. And they understand the importance of getting everything lit up in time before June, you know.
Good.
I think we told them June fifteenth.
Right.
So that you could get your reporting done.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, that's gonna have huge financial, big financial consequences.
Yeah, it's meaning.
And while that, it also do the EV charging credits too. We'll see if those last all the way through till the filing of the, the, the return, but.
The other thing is we're about to go into the heavy season. I mean, we're seasonally, it's a great time to go live because the impact of solar, it's like as opposed to October when you're.
Right.
I mean.
For sure.
I'll get as much.
Yeah.
Yeah, our bills can vary from fifty to eighty thousand dollars seasonally, so monthly. So it's a big time.
Really big.
It's exciting.
Well, Jude, thank you so much. I think it's remarkable how you are able to manage like just the maintenance aspect on a cycle that keeps us moving. I, I'm, it boggles my mind, but thank you very much.
It's all fun and we have a, a great team. Absolutely. Thank you.
Leila?
Hi.
Hi.
I got, uh, I got my first request for attendance to the roadie cutting, um, eight four, gonna have a meeting with, um, Jason Henry and Senator Gannon. So he wants to, she said, make sure you send him an invitation.
Oh, great.
Yeah, I don't know if anyone else has received requests for.
Revenue tabbing though?
Standing order, a few people, yeah.
When are we gonna, that's not gonna happen till?
No, not very long.
Sue, but there's community excitement. That's a good thing.
Yeah.
Chuck, did you have some?
Now I'm saying, I don't know if we end up with like great ribbon cuttings because you could have solar gray.
Oh, I know.
The building and community corrections.
Yeah.
As well, I'm not trying to add any more fun, but.
We do need the commissioners to think about what you wanna put in the.
Oh, yes, yes.
All the time.
The time capsule.
Time capsule.
Besides a poster.
How about a box of math? Isn't that an era? A hundred years from now, they'll laugh like crazy. Or is it, I don't know, is it a hundred twenty-five? What's the, is there?
I think.
Opening day?
I don't know. Sometimes in the, in the buildings in Boston, it's until the building is knocked down, it can be hundreds of years. They'll put them under water stones. Ours will be under the, um, the county seal out in the main courtyard. It's, it's not gonna wanna go anywhere. It's a ten-foot slab of granite.
Right.
So it'll be there for one time.
Better we throw an iPhone.
Yeah, that's right. That's, they'll say, why is it charger? Why is it so big?
So whatever you guys come up with.
Okay.
Thank you.
That, that sounds like it ought to be a project that community based.
Yeah.
You know, like across the, the county employees, we should get suggestions.
Would you say?
A newsletter. Yeah, I was just gonna say, or put something in the newspaper. Like, people could have created.
That would be fun.
It would be great to get a community involvement and who, maybe we could do something where like we do have a, like a, like a time capsule burial. No, but that would be really fun. Where the people who, if their, if your suggestion is chosen, you could come be part of the process. It would just be a nice way, because it's such a community, uh, building. Um, if you really need to get some, some members of the community to come and participate. So.
Maybe school kids.
Oh, yeah.
Specifically.
That, that's a great idea.
That might be, uh, 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 might be a good assignment, you know, for the kids to come up with what you're, you know, and then have each school come up with five things or, you know, and then we'll decide.
Be to work on like a memo that we could distribute out to the schools and.
What you think, what they think.
Idea, like what if, and maybe we could have a category for like elementary, middle and high school so that we could do, you know, like, um, do a couple items.
Six feet by four inches.
What, when do we need to fill this time capsule?
Inches by two feet.
How big's the capsule?
Think they're debating.
Oh.
Six inches by two feet is the length of the PVC.
What is it?
Okay.
Six inches by two feet.
Oh. Yeah, so you can roll.
Not really big.
And it'll do in like, uh, they're, they're pouring a concrete vault set it in so that it will be preserved from the elements. And then the granite will be set on top. So.
Cool.
It'll be substantial, yeah.
That's, uh, that's what we should do. That would be so great. And so if we have like, I don't know, if we can get like two, I mean, how many, we'll figure out how many we wanna choose and we could just do it in different categories for elementary, middle and high school.
Mm-hmm. That's a great idea.
All right. And then we should take a picture. We can take a picture of all the, uh, winners and put it in the time capsule.
Mm-hmm.
Get out our Insta camera. Wonderful.
Thank you.
Great. That's fun.
A writing assignment. This is why I think that this is what I think should go. I know, that's not our job, isn't it?
You gotta go to stop, stop on your ass. All right. Um, that concludes department head updates. We can move on to new business, old business, and we have a Department of Corrections, um, walk-in inmate administrative transfer.
I make a move, I move to approve an inmate administrative transfer pursuant to NHRS A thirty dash B colon twenty-one dated April twenty-third, twenty twenty-five, transferring one inmate to Hillsborough County as recommended by the superintendent.
Second. Any discussion?
Nope.
For former commissioner Godu?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Um, I'll draft up a memo for the, um, or I'll draft up like a sheet that we can, um, distribute. So. Um, any other new business or old business? This was good new business.
Yeah. Um. Shall we discuss the, the budget as we have proposals in front of us?
All right, yes. Which part do, what do you wanna take?
Well, we've been, we've been discussing three different options for, for, uh, the raises that for the non-union employees. Uh, and I, I think we're in agreement, but I just wanna publicly, uh, move that we approved the budget as it's written with a COLA plus three percent uh, increase for all non-union employees.
Okay. So, um, I, I think we're not, we're not voting on the budget here now because that's a different motion that has been made for the, I think we need Commissioner Tom Bro. With respect to the most, so we can finalize that draft with the, um, wage increase for non-union employees, I second the motion to, um, for the COLA plus rate, which is what we have discussed.
Okay.
Um.
So we're all in agreement on that.
With respect to the COLA testing. So on the motion for, um, to set the non-union wage increase as COLA plus three.
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay. Um, and the other, I think with respect to voting on the proposed budget that has, we have to formally vote on that and I believe we'll do that next week. Or.
Um, I, it was, today was hopefully gonna.
I guess. I mean. We don't have Commissioner, uh, Tom Morello here and I'm, with respect to the budget, um, I'd like to say still a couple things. One, um, I know everybody worked incredibly hard to, um, get the budget at a good, a good place, right? And we talked about, we worked with everybody and the directive was to bring your budget to four percent. And the reason we talked about bringing budget not to exceed four percent increase is because, um, as I see it in, you know, one person's view, I think we're in a really serious situation where, um, with use of fund balance, we're offsetting, um, expenses by you, using fund balance, um, to the tune of about five million dollars a year. At this rate of progression, if we can just use at this rate, that's, um, we're gonna run out in five years. And, uh, that scares me. That scares me for the county and for the community because that's either going to have to be changed with, um, tax, I mean, a huge taxing face or some significant cuts. So when we, the approach of that four percent, um, for me was, listen, this is, we, I know everything's more costly and we wanna support our employees. So those are important things in recognizing that, but it also means a time that we have to make, uh, make cut and cut back, um, be more, uh, more careful with our spending and what I feel upset about is when I look at our budget, all but one department did what we asked and, um, and one department is at nearly ten percent, nine change in their increases. And I don't think, um, and I, I'm going to support approving the budget because I don't think one group should. I, I don't wanna say no to the budget for one group when all the other groups have worked so hard, but what I see is one group that is like essentially taking from the other groups in the county. And this is a, uh, our county has historically worked so hard to work together to support each other. And if we have an outlier, it's, um, it's at the cost of the other departments, the top and other groups. So. Um, I know that, uh, Commissioner Godu and Commissioner Tom Bro have a different perspective on it and, um, I'm not going to stop the, you know, I'm going to vote to approve the budget because I can't emphasize enough how much I know that everyone, it, it's a tough time and everybody worked really hard. And there was a lot of effort and a lot of thought and I appreciate everyone's work ethic. I really do. And, and, and really thinking about the whole and working on the budget as well, our whole within our Rockham County community as well as the whole as in our, uh, community at large. So, um, that's voting.
Are we gonna vote on that?
Yeah, I'll call the, I guess we opened up new business, but I can make the motion afterwards.
Okay. So, uh, I understand your concern and, uh, agree that it is, uh, unfortunately, we weren't be able to get the sheriff's department in line, uh, with what we asked everybody else to do. Uh, I looked at what items would need to be cut and to achieve our goal and I was unhappy with all the counts. Uh, so I feel it's a benefit of the county to allow this to go as it is. And, um, as budgets go, it's revenue and expenses and we're having a particularly bad year for revenue. I don't think that's gonna be consistent. Uh, moving down the road because we have Chuck fighting for us every inch of the way in Concord. Uh, also, I'm, uh, anticipating additional revenues that may come in that we'll seek. So I support the budget as it is and happy to make it go through.
Okay. Um, on the motion, uh, while I move to approve the budget, the, um, commissioners per twenty twenty-six commissioners per full respect.
Done.
On the motion, Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
And I vote yes. I think that concludes new business, old business. Public comment. You're done?
No one sees us.
Missed that? Okay. Well, with that, I, uh, will entertain a motion. I'll move to enter into non-public pursuant to ninety-one eight, only three. Sorry. Um, on the motion, Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
And I vote, yes. Thank you, everybody.
It's one thing I realized because of like.
Hello, everyone. That's some back and forth. We're back into public session, um, having come out of non-public. And I'm gonna turn it over to Commissioner Godu to make a few motions with respect to all the non-public sessions we had on this meeting day.
I'd like to make a motion to seal the non-public minutes uh, indefinitely because it is determined that the divulgence of this information would likely affect adversely the reputation of any person other than a member of this board regarding sessions one and two.
Second. Any discussion?
No.
On that motion, Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
And I vote yes. And do you have one more other non-public motion to me?
Uh, there were four sessions. Uh, session number three, we will not seal. Session number four, uh, we sealed the non-public minutes indefinitely because it is determined that the divulgence of this information likely would render a proposed action ineffective.
Second. On that motion, Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
And I vote yes. So now we have, we had tabled a few motions under four C and, uh, Commissioner Godu, would you like to make the motions in succession? There are five motions.
Take them all at once?
I think we should take them all at once.
Okay. All right. So I move to approve the wage adjustment option three, which is a COLA plus five point nine percent and eight point nine percent, the JW and CE as outlined in the memo from Human Resources dated April twenty-one, twenty twenty-five in lieu of the annual increase percentage. This adjustment will be effective on each employee's annual evaluation date contingent upon the employee receiving a passing score on their annual evaluation with no reset of annual eval- evaluation date. This recommendation is made by the Senior Director of Human Resources.
But is that, I, I think it's just a total of that it's a COLA plus.
Right.
Okay, second.
Um, and I just would like to clarify that all of these wage adjustments have to do with avoiding compression, making sure that people who are supervising are not being paid less than those that they are supervising.
Supervisees.
Do supervisees.
I second that motion, but if you wanna just go all the way.
I'll just go through the rest. Okay. Uh, I moved to approve a twelve point eleven percent wage adjustment for HB in lieu of the cost of living adjustment and the annual evaluation increase. This adjustment will be effective on the employee's annual evaluate, evaluation date contingent upon the employees receiving a passing score on their annual evaluation. This recommendation is made by the Senior Director of Human Resources and will take effect on July one. I move to approve the wage adjustment three, which reflects a five percent, uh, total increase for AS as outlined in the memo from Human Resources dated April twenty-one in lieu of the annual evaluation increase percentage. This adjustment, adjustment will be effective on the employee's annual evaluation date contingent upon the employee receiving a passing score on their annual.
Intergent upon the employee receiving a passing score on their annual evaluation with no reset of annual evaluation date. This recommendation is made by the Senior Director of Human Resources. Motion four, I move to approve the wage adjustment option three. Which reflects a new rate of fifty-three dollars and sixty-one cents. As outlined in the memo from Human Resources dated April twenty-one, twenty twenty-five. In lieu of the annual out, evaluation increase percentage. This adjustment will be effective on each employee's evaluation date contingent upon. The employee receiving a passing score on their evaluation with no reset of evaluation date. This recommendation is made by the Senior Director of Human Resources. Motion five, move to approve amending the approved proposed regrade wage adjustment for unit managers. To utilize the option two proposal for wage adjustments. In lieu of the cola and annual evaluation increase effective July one, twenty twenty-five. Pending the executive committee approval as recommended by the Senior Director of Human Resources.
And I second, uh, all five motions. Any further discussion? I think you explained it well with, we're trying to address compression and with the, the new year, so. This full year.
That's it.
On the motions, Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
And on the all five motions, I also vote yes. Um, there is, that concludes our business. There's one final motion, Commissioner Godu.
I move that we adjourn.
I second that. All in favor.
All right.
Have a nice weekend, everybody.